Begin. Village Board meeting of Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five to order. And we will begin with roll call. We have one of our.
He was.
Um, trustee Booker. Here trustee Owens.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Greaves.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Montgomery here. And we will probably be joined. Trustee Woods. He was on. Uh, so hopefully he'll be able to reconnect via Zoom tonight. I'd like to invite everyone to join me for the President's meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any persons that desire to be heard?
There is not, President.
Alright, thank you. So we will follow our agenda as presented. Um, we do have elected official staff reports in our packet. That were sent out. Are there any questions? Or comments? Trustee Owens.
Okay, this is for retired, those who regards to the meeting with Ted. Can you just explain a little bit what's going on there?
Yeah, Milwaukee Habitat reached out to us. Typically, they've been doing pretty much all of their projects in Milwaukee. Uh, but they had kind of reviewed their scope a little bit and they're trying to uh, get into some of the suburban communities. Um, I think some of the communities they have met with have been like Wauwatosa. Or like in Oak Creek, Shorewood. Um, so they also met with us about some potential projects. Um, you don't, they're not looking for many, it would be like one or two projects that would fit. Uh, most of the projects like that they do are our new construction projects for housing. Um, so we just identified some of the sites that we knew that would be available or are available um, on the market. And so they're just looking for some potential projects.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, I would say, uh, I want to break down Habitat and good groups work with. And right now they're building five or 15 new homes in the Wauwatosa area. And we are working with Phil Parsons. Lights of election of.
To us, that is their big concern as they talk with the suburban communities and how properties at a low value that they typically end up doing well with, so. Uh, but that's where we kind of talked through some. You know, some potential projects that, you know, maybe they may be able to get for a cheaper amount or something. But uh, there's not too many sites since we're almost fully, you know, developed, especially with our, our single family housing. So it wasn't a very long blast.
Yeah.
Well, I love to see something like that happen.
Yeah.
Uh, affordable housing will give people opportunity to own a home.
Yeah, but I think the, the, the guarantee of course that they have to be right around two hundred thousand or less.
That's their goal.
Yeah.
They, they understand maybe for the suburban communities, it might be a little more, but that's always kind of the goal that they have.
Yeah. Um, alright, so we will move on to our consent agenda. And on there tonight, we have consideration of our March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five minutes. Accept the February twenty twenty-five voucher statement. Accept the March twenty twenty-five voucher statement. Consider approval of a temporary Class B license to sell fermented marked beverages and wine at the twenty twenty-five community vibes. Twenty twenty-five Fourth of July celebration. Twenty twenty-five national night out. Twenty twenty-five go yoga and twenty twenty-five harvest. Of point seven forty. With Bradley. And consider authorization of contract to accept vibrant basis green in and on up to fifty thousand dollars of ten mile park. So that's a pretty hefty consent agenda. Um, any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Regarding, uh, I don't see. Voucher statements, these are just soliciting checks. Uh, are we going to be getting quarterly financials or people going for the review?
Yep, yep, those have been, and they have been coming every quarter. So the next one that you will get will be in the month of May. But it's always thirty days after the quarter ends for Derek to wrap that up. So you'll see, um, twenty twenty-five quarter one in the, in the month of May.
And I want the members to show that trustee Woods has been joining us. So, good evening, Jack. Um, any other questions? Uh, trustee Owens.
Uh, this is, uh, uh, letter. After authorization for the fifty thousand dollar ten mile park. How much of that can we, I don't use, I see that it's matching funds and things like that.
We will use all fifty thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, probably because the price is going up, right?
We, I mean, with, with the project, it came under budget bidding on Ten Mile Park, but we had to change some things of the plan to get it there. Um, and so, um, you know, with this, we're able to probably bring some amenities and additional landscaping back to the plan. Um, so yeah, we'll be able to use all fifty thousand.
Alright.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just have a comment related to the fifty thousand from W A D C. Uh, I'm glad that we were accepted.
Me too.
Headline.
Yep.
Because I just closed out one and I said, it's easy money. Uh, and I know it could be very helpful to this project. But also the person who actually is the interim director is from Brown Deer.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Who? Catherine River.
Oh, she lives in Brown Deer?
Yes, well, she did at the point last time I saw her. Cause her family is owners of I was.
Really?
Yes.
Alright. Any other questions? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
If we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Greaves to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I just have the motion carries, thank you. The next item or next section is new business. Uh, item number eight, consider approval of revolution twenty-five hundred and oh five declaring world migratory birthday in the village of Brown Deer. Any questions? This is an annual event. Um. So I don't know if there are any questions, if not, can we, uh? And this, this second Saturday in May.
Yep.
I have a question, is there anything beside a resolution that would be special for this day?
For migratory birthday, no.
It'll be probably in our, the tracker.
Yep. Yeah, usually we will have like an article a year that, that will talk about migratory birds or something in Brown Deer.
Any other questions? If not, is there a?
Sure. Uh, a move that we approve the resolution for world migratory bird.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Greaves and second by trustee Booker to approve revolution twenty-five hundred and five declaring world migratory birthday in the village of Brown Deer. This is the resolution, so we need to roll call. Uh, trustee Thompson.
Yeah.
Trustee Greaves. I'm trustee Johnson. Uh, trustee Owens. Uh, trustee Booker. Uh, President Montgomery and the resolution, oh, trustee Woods.
Aye.
The, uh, is a doctor, thank you. The next item is discuss and possible consideration of an MOU with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for traffic signal at West Brown Deer Road and Arbonne Drive. How?
Yes, thanks, President Montgomery. So this one we had been working on for probably about two months now. Uh, with the DOT. Um, orig-, uh, basically this stems from a traffic analysis that was first done on behalf of Sage Wind to locate fireside market on the corner there. Uh, based on the traffic analysis, the DOT determined that a traffic light, as you know, will go in at that intersection. And the other thing that the DOT said originally was the median is used for left turns in and out of Badger Meter. And autos would be closed. In communicating that with Badger Meter and autos, obviously they were not supportive of that change in the median. So, uh, Nate and I took the liberty of setting up a meeting with the DOT and the businesses and us to kind of talk through options. Uh, in, in a way to get a kind of a mutual agreement and a way to at least keep that open for now. Uh, one of the things that we did was we did lengthen, um, um, the, the left turn lane. So if you're heading westbound on Brown Deer and if you're making a left turn at the intersection to, on to Arbonne, uh, we lengthened, um, that left turn lane a little bit, a desire of the DOT. But another thing that we talked through with the DOT was this MOU, which basically would state if the village has any development into, in the Arbonne cul-de-sac. Um, that we would already agree that we would close that median. Um, just understanding that that would increase the traffic volume so much that the DOT would not uh, want to see that median kept open. Uh, there's also some language in the MOU that just states in general that um, if the, the traffic were to increase where the queues exceeded a hundred feet or um, if the, the, that queue line exceeded so much that blocked traffic in one of the lanes. Or if we saw crashes in that intersection because of that. Um, that we would also close the median as well. So Nate and I felt like these were agreeable terms. Um, and both autos and Badger Meter were very, uh, that and pleased with the outcome. Uh, so this is just something that we need the board to agree to tonight. So we can assign that to, uh, the DOT. And this is kind of one of the final obstacles before, uh, for us to get the, the, the street light installed. Uh, one thing that will come before the board and probably the next month or so is some kind of agreement on, oh, sorry, it'll be longer than a, um, a month, because we got to get the engineering estimates on the traffic light itself. And once we get those, we'll have an agreement on that. So that will be forthcoming, but we needed to finalize this first. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Will the, will the light be installed before the construction?
When you say the construction, are you referring to the actual construction of fireside market? I bet they would happen simultaneously to each other. But the, but we would anticipate that the light would be completed, you know, probably before fireside market. It would be completed.
Yeah, I will, I, I would expect that, but I'm just wondering in terms of that might help them too in terms of one back and forth with folks.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be done simultaneously because they still need to, um, you know, get the engineering estimates and that. And that will take a, a little bit of time to do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be later this year, though.
Okay. Um, questions? Trustee Johnson.
Have you finalized the breakdown of percentages, who's going to pay for what?
Generally, yes. And all, all parties have been informed.
Okay, so that's all we know, yeah.
Yes.
Other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve this MOU?
I move that we, uh, here. Uh, I move that we approve the understanding for.
No, it's, oh, no.
Okay. The, 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 the Congress. And the, with the Department of the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the traffic, traffic signal at West Brown Deer Road and North Arbonne Drive.
Perfect.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Owens to approve the MOU with Wisconsin Department of Transportation for traffic signal at West Brown Deer Road and North Arbonne Drive. All those in favor? Uh, any? Any opposed? I just have the motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda is discuss and possible consideration of twenty twenty-five goals for the village manager and long-term strategic planning initiatives. Uh. Who's leading this discussion?
I can tee it up a little bit, um, if I may, uh, and there's just one portion I just want to make sure that we talk about. Basically, what's in the memo is just the summary of the notes, um, that were stated at the last meeting as far as the, the goals it um, to include, so I'll let you as a board that if you want to talk about any other, feel free. Uh, but the, the, the one I wanted just to make sure that we were all on the same page on was number eleven, which is talking about the strategic plan. Uh, I started talking through this with staff and I, I think for us to best execute this goal, um, we will, we would ask for just a little bit of clarity because there's kind of two directions that we could go. And if you ask any community who does a strategic plan, it looks so different depending on the community. So for us to get a, a best understanding and a clear direction of, of your goals, here are kind of the general two directions. The first direction I would say is more informational based. It's, it's more of understanding kind of the, the strategic plan that staff has in mind with our understanding of where your vision is for the village. So it kind of execute that. What we could do during the board meetings is for, for meetings that we may not have as much on the agenda. We could have one of the department heads attend and basically give an annual summary of what's going on in their department. And then we can have a general conversation back and forth on, on items that, you know, you would like to see um, and, and vision for the department. I think a really excellent example of this is when we had the police department attend about a month ago. They gave their. And then the board kind of had a back and forth with Chief Nimmer and Captain Schmitz about things that they're seeing, especially when it comes to enforcement, there is questions about Walmart. Uh, there's questions about new development and what that means for staffing. I mean, those are some general, big picture, long-term this, um, planning discussions that we could do department by department and throughout the year, we can kind of gradually do them all, especially we could try to do them all before we get to the budget process. So you have that information when it comes time to the annual budget. The second route we could take is a little bit more elaborate. Um, and where municipalities, you know, will create an actual document and uh, the document is reviewed annually. Um, it basically outlining the strategic initiatives on paper. Um, with this, we have, you know, typically, uh, communities will get uh, board members, staff, community members, volunteer committees. Uh, they'll get a, a lot of people involved in the parse process. Um, so one way that this could look is basically I could create a document to give you as a board to fill out, which basically would go department by department and you could identify what initiatives you would foresee that department focusing on. After that form would be completed by all of you. Um, I would take the forms and give them to the appropriate department heads. Um, so they would see the list of initiatives that you had documented. And then one way we could do this is have each the department or have each of you assigned to a department and you could work one-on-one with that department. And with some of you where you have a volunteer committee overseeing a department in a way, uh, for example, like the Beautification Public Works Committee could work with Matthew as the Public Works Director as an example, to basically look at the summary of the initiatives and kind of identify the main themes that come forward. Um, hey, we could also utilize the volunteer committees to review those initiatives. And by the way, uh, we would also have staff or if any community members want to identify any initiatives to propose, that could all be done part of this process. But in the end, with these committees of a staff and a board member, they would work to finalize this list, which would come back before the board and have you as a board kind of, um, finalize that list of items as the, as the strategic, long-term strategic plan. And we would put that in one final document. And then that would be something that we would just review annually to make sure it's in line with everyone's vision. Um, but you know, certainly that would be, you know, time that we would take to invest in such a document. Um, and so that's kind of a second route. And so I just asked the board for some feedback before we, uh, before you consider adopting the goals, just so we have a clear direction as far as, you know, what kind of time commitment are you wanting to put into the, the strategic plan?
I will open that door to anyone who wants to come.
What's our original thought process when we asked the possible to provide? Behind the, 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 the. And what was our original thought process when we asked the strategic plan for? The strategic plan? The strategic plan? Or the strategic plan that was going to engage your. What was our, what was our initial thought process in that?
I don't know. I know, uh, trustee Johnson is looking and I don't know if he had the notes, but I guess the one thing that. Um, I want to be careful now in terms of. That we're here to do the day-to-day, we're here for governance. Um, you all have committee assignments. I have more than all of you. And this means more, uh, not just for the board, but for staff. And they're already, um. Talking, probably some a lot more than others. So, um, yeah, we get to what this is asking to other players. Uh, you know, we have the long-range plan, we have. Our budgeting process, we have, uh, the what's the plan for park and rep?
The comprehensive park plan?
Yeah.
Yep.
Cool.
Yeah.
So there are all these other pieces that we get. Not all at the same time, but they all lead back to, and then we got community survey that we get back. So. Do we need another plan? To give us. A bigger. Strategic plan, a strategic plan wants to do it, then somebody's got to be monitoring that. And the other thing we all need to understand is. There's an election every year. So somebody may not be here. If somebody new or new people may come in and say, well, we don't want to do that. We'd rather do. Something else. Um, but whatever the the, uh. Board. Decides, but I will say this, I don't need anymore. Immediately, immediately go to. That's my personal opinion.
You have to know a lot of boards here. When we get to strategic planning, usually there's a. Uh, even where you go in your workshop, that thing, you know, put your charts up and everybody's saying. We do a lot.
Yeah, trustee, to trustee Booker's point, like some communities will get a facilitator.
Yeah.
And 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 that way, sometimes the village manager likes that because they like to be a participant in it. And sometimes if you're, you know, if you're in the facilitator role, you can't participate as much. So that would be another route is doing it in a special meeting and just doing that and then inviting any of the volunteer committees to attend. But you do it as a special workshop. That's another way. Uh, to certainly do that. Um, but you know, what from that information, we would then put it into some kind of spreadsheet or something like that. At that identifies all the initiatives. That's that's a, you know, I would say that's kind of like that second option, but it would, it's different in the sense that, yeah, you could just do it in all in one meeting.
I have a question. Um, what did you present it to us a couple of meetings ago? Was that something that the department heads normally have to create with some other reason? They could just probably provide that information to us, not creating additional work or creating additional. After you have to gather that type of.
Good question. It's pretty common for police departments to create an annual report. Like that he provided in the packet. Most departments don't create something like that. Um, so, um. You know, I would say libraries probably the other department that will create an annual report like that. Health department does as well. Uh, but besides that, it's, I don't, you know, like you look at Derek and finance, like, I mean, his annual report is. I mean, it's the budget, it's the annual comprehensive financial, you know, it's those documents that summarize his work. You know, um. I I think, you know, maybe with the the public works activities with everything ingrained in that, that's possible, but I can tell you. Like with Matthew's workload, he doesn't, he doesn't have the staff support or he doesn't have the time to create something like that. So. I think for the annual reports, probably the ones that we're receiving are is reasonable and most of the ones that we would. But. I would also add, that doesn't mean that we can't have departments. Come in and give updates like they're doing, that if you wanted to focus on a general discussion, you could do that. Now, could, you could still do that too. Before, if you want to put together like a a list of initiatives, like we could still do that information to keep the board informed on matters too. So.
Other comments?
Yeah, also just look at my notes. This came up under long-range planning. The number of things we talked about, you know, the given. Side time at each board meeting, but also we talked about the end report, uh, basically that was a good tool. To really share with the board, but also show the community. But we, I think, my notes, we just threw it out there with no patterns, like how to do four, we just thought of the post-teen plan, sounds good. Uh, but I I think is this the process that you talked about? It is how committed are we going to be to the process? And it's possibly what we want for us to go through. But we also have a number of documents out to that. I don't think we're clearly tracking already. Um, for so for me, just like, let's take a look at those long-term documents we have in place. And how can we build off those to ensure that some of these happen in time of that?
Yeah. Because like, once again, now this is another option, but like, right, we have the comprehensive park plan, the comprehensive plan. We're going to have a park, public park plan. I actually just sent that to the, um, department head today to begin reviewing, uh, because that's pretty much drafted. Um, the public art plan.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'm missing one plan as well, but. Long story short, like, you know, as departments give their updates, you know, maybe they could revert back to that. So like in the month of May, you're going to have the Parks and Recreation. Director Danny Mattis attend and give an update on the ice rink and other things with the Parks and Rec. Department, and that's where part of that report, we could revert back to her comp park plan to show the progress that has been made since it's adopted. And then, hey, in the next one, three, five years. You know, what other initiatives are we forecasting to do? Oh, uh, the capital improvement plan, that's another long-term. Right, strategic plan that we review every year as well. So like for the Parks and Recreation Department, they will be included in that capital improvement plan. And that will be another way that we can talk through those strategic initiatives. But it's really, I I want you to know, staff, we can do whatever you want. Just know, I I I think what would help for us is to know how engaged. Throughout the process does the board want to be? Do, is it more of, we bring things to you on an informational basis and we do department by department? Or do you want to do like a workshop and that can be on a one-to-one basis or? Everyone together at the same moment and we do it in one special meeting. Um, so that's where that clarity will help us to put together that process. I just want to. Do you know, there's a lot of ways that we can do it.
I have the concept of the informational, uh, just because it will. It will give you an opportunity and the department has an opportunity to provide us information if they feel is relevant and important. Perfect based on the plans that are already in place. The strategic plan and those others, but what would be helpful, and I was trying to, I was. Thinking as you were talking and then by the time I started writing down that probably too. So if you could provide us with those, a list of those plans that are already in place. Give us an opportunity to say, okay, at some point. As an example, Danny's going to come in in May and talk about what's going on. In her department compared to what we documented when we did the company. The whole, the core.
Yeah.
Because I have to participate in that side of it.
Yep, yep. Okay.
I wanted, uh, I wanted to give out to me, uh, trustee Woods, did you have anything you wanted to add or questions?
Um, I I'm of the opinion we don't need to do a big formal thing. I would just like. The informational idea sounds like what we're actually looking for.
Okay. Um, trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I would say the informational piece is good, but I also want to see some goals and outcomes. That is presented in a yearly basis so we can kind of track. How well we carried out these plans that we have in place. So the discussion is fine, but I want also a staff start thinking about what kind of outcome and kind of goals you want to achieve.
And I'm assuming that's probably done. And probably in terms of.
Yeah, so a lot of times we we will have that as part of the budget summary pages. Um, the thing is it gets buried. Because of all the numbers that we're reviewing for the budget. So I think what we can do, once again, to have this more of a strategic discussion amongst the board and staff. Is when it's their time to present, you know, they'll give their general summary of what happened with the department. But maybe there's like a a a summary page that we can identify. You know, that brings forward to you what their goals were for the year and what their initiatives that they accomplished for the year. And goals, we can talk like short and long-term goals. And that would be a way that we can tee up that discussion really nicely for the board to give some back and forth. For example, I'm just going to use Danny again because she's going to probably be the first one in here. That will kind of incorporate this, but when we talk through Danny, she'll give the update on the ice rink and then that allows us to have an open. Strategic conversation of what the ice rink looks like in a year, what it looks like in three to five years. And we can have that discussion. It's same with the pond or any other recreation amenity that you want to talk through. And we can have that same discussion for public works and. Any departments that will give the update. Probably the admin side, we would combine all of ours. Um, just because I I I think that would be a little easier between Karen, Derek and myself to do that. Uh, but Nate, I think, could be able to give his own update, um. And, uh, we'd do the same thing with Dane and the library as well and Matthew with public works as well. So there's generally probably about five. Type of focused discussions we could do per year. Does that work?
That works. Because I mean, you already answered and reported stuff out there, just to matter of tweaking it. You know, and if you, you know, concepts, who would then just present it to us and then if we have questions or. Or comments, then we can just, no deal with it at that time.
And that way too, you know, once you see what their goals were and their future initiatives, we can keep all that in one spot too. So that way, that might be an easy way that a few weeks after that meeting, you want to circle back to that. We could maybe put that in the one drive or something for you to be able to reference. So.
So Chad pulled out that number eleven for us to discuss. Are there questions on any, uh, other goals that?
Yeah, and what if with this was approved, I would make the recommendation based on the feedback. That I was given, I would modify that to say initiate strategic discussions. That allows the village board. So on and so on.
Yeah.
Um, so I think unless you want to modify it differently, but based on what I heard, I I feel like that would be a a more accurate description.
And the other thing that we had highlighted. During the survey, I mean, the evaluation meeting plus. To utilize these areas in your report.
Yes.
So that we can tie things back that directly relate. To these areas.
Yep. So once this is adopted, yeah, you'll 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 see my focus change. Um, and or or how I set up my my, yeah, how I structure my. My updates. So the first meeting in May, you'll probably, that'll be the first one, you'll see that.
Um. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, just looking at goal number two. I guess I'm looking for something a little more, uh, whether it's completing the construction process. What about the ribbon cutting and all the other stuff that's going to be take place in there? I think that needs to be part of your goal because we need all this part.
You can, I'd be, I mean, you're as a board, you're more than welcome to add something about include a ribbon cutting ceremony. Are you talking about at the end or as?
So construction is complete, it seems like it just falls off after.
Yeah.
I want to see something that related to some type of ceremony.
Yeah. Yeah, at the end though, because sometimes like, like for when we did Phil in forty-three, you know how we did the shovel. Of the dirt, you're not looking for something like that, right? It's ribbon cutting at the end. I know. Well, that's why I want to make sure because I would be behind on that call.
I mean, this is a project that we're obviously, so I'm sure that, you know, to know that this is something that the village.
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to modify and include that language for number two, I'm I'm happy with that goal. We can definitely accomplish that.
That would be a perfect funding, eh?
At completion, which right now would be like the start of of fall. I I think we anticipate somewhere near the end of September. Would be a completion date for that project. Yep.
Questions or comments? If not, we need to have a motion to approve. How is goals for twenty twenty five? Um. With the suggested modifications.
I make the motion, I move to approve the twenty twenty five goals for the business to include. The addition of the ribbon cutting in item two, uh, including other projects. And then in item number eight.
Modified to say initiate a str- strategic discussions?
Oh, just define. Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Greaves to approve. Uh, the twenty twenty five goals of the village manager. Uh, to include the South Florida event under item number two. And item number eleven to be, uh. Revise to say strategic discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? I just have emotion carried unanimously. Um, the next item on our agenda is. Uh, I move a German at six thirty-eight P M. Have a good night, Jeff.
Good job.
Thank you.